Actually, in Sunday I had about a set of record temperature baby.
It was a return?
We know, we know he is.
Maybe it all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, I thought the road between here and there was cut. No, it's open this morning.
Little bit of ice, though, I was surprised.
There's still icy.
Morning, Eric.
Morning.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. I will put in a request when I get back there. Last week Larry and I were supposed to be at the law trustee meeting at noon, which we missed, and they didn't have a form, so they're really asking that we...
Please.
Uh, yeah, Rhea?
Please.
We have to be there at noon, and it's done by 12:15.
Yeah, but really fast.
Well, that's why last week we did adjourn until 12:15, we missed it.
You have, you have to appreciate, though, that, you know, after a three-week break, you have a lot of stuff piled up.
Absolutely, I can appreciate that.
That's why I made last week's meeting kind of...
This week we can break at five to 12.
Maybe.
Knowing, knowing that we will have more to do later. Maybe. Okay, Rhea, you hear this? You heard me, I put it out there.
Yeah, you did.
And I'm getting, you know...
Yes. The, the secretary did it. After he did his outlook wise, he put on the outlook.
Yes.
And you're so committed to putting on other people's computers.
Well, um...
If they accepted you.
I know, I don't know. Because Larry just had, just had a point on last Tuesday, so...
Oh, oh, I see.
Yeah. That's been missing her a couple of months.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Well, I heard Judge Rosley, because that's Hawaii. I love Regina now.
You guys were there in dark clothes for sales calls? Yeah, I heard that.
We'll keep it. That's lunch.
Where?
By yourself.
Yeah. Where, once again?
Julie said that had facts to the list of members, and they don't want to change. So, maybe you can come by the office and we'll get a copy of that to you.
Yeah, let's pull this.
Okay. And I'm not sure if what we did last week is what we were supposed to do, but...
Pretty impressive.
It is. Can you do a nine forty?
Twenty years. He was a man child.
Oh, that's hilarious.
A man child.
I was only eighteen years away from giving one of them. Congratulations. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, how are you, Richard?
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda would be public comment. If anybody would like to speak, we have, we have another public comment at nine thirty. Seen none, we'll discuss the announced items to be discussed in closed session.
Okay, we'll be going into closed session to discuss... Let's see, we don't need one, is that right? On number two, we have conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9, not Meadows Conservancy, Sierra Club, and Sierra Watch versus County Lassen and Lassen County Board Supervisors, Lassen County Superior Court case number 45938, Third District Court of Appeals case number C067839. Number three, conference with real property negotiator, location Hurlong One Stop Building 17447-375 Nevada Street, Hurlong, California. Negotiator Richard Egan, subject provide direction to property negotiator regarding price and terms of potential lease. Negotiate with individuals Hal Hay, Larry Smith, Steve Bazulo. Number two A, is that supposed to be three A?
This is one A.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Additional conference with real property negotiator, location Fort Sage Preschool 447-315 Nevada Street, Hurlong, California. Negotiator Richard Egan, subject provide direction to property negotiator regarding price and terms of potential lease. De-negotiate with Fort Sage School District Superintendent Brian Young. Number four, employee performance evaluation, public defender Rhea Gianati. Number two, sorry, four two, performance evaluation, County Council Rhonda Vanderfoss, code. Number four three, employee performance evaluation, interim county administrative officer Richard Egan. And number six, claims report. I think that's it.
Okay, we'll go into closed session.
United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, in favor or against for your ever enduring guidance, we ask you closing wisdom and fortitude that we may disclose our knowledge and facts intelligently among all humanity of whom we serve. Now, we'll announce facts from closed session. Let's see, the board received a report from special counsel regarding Lassen County Superior Court case number 45938, Third District Court of Appeals case number C067839. There was no reportable action. The board also performed employee performance evaluation of public defender Rhea Gianati and gave her an excellent evaluation. Items three, which includes conference with real property negotiator on two locations, the Hurlong One Stop Building and the Fort Sage Preschool, have been continued until after the open session meeting, as well as the performance evaluations for county council and interim county administrative officer. And a claims report was received. No reportable action about it. Thank you. We'll move on to B two, agenda approval additions and orders provisions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove item H three, remove it from today's agenda and add it to the next meeting.
And I have a, I wanted to have a question on F one. That might be a possible.
Can we talk a little louder, please? We can't read the background.
Yeah, we're looking at F one. Oh, was it?
Yeah. Yes, it was corrected before Friday. It was corrected before the end of Friday. But I believe we're going to be pulling that.
We're going to be pulling F one.
Uh, you can have it sent.
Okay, with that, we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, passes unanimously. We'll move on to public comment. This is the portion of our meeting where we take public comment, and it's normally those wishing to speak on an item that's not on our agenda, but even if you're here for an item on the agenda, feel free to speak at this time if you're not able to stick around, so. If there's members of the public who wish to comment, just step forward and state your name for the recorder. All right, seen none, we'll move on. We will, let's take up our un-agendized reports, but board members, we'll start with you.
Wednesday night, CAO, Richard Egan and myself had a town hall in Hurlong, which was with Bazulo and Smith. It was very productive. We have some optimism, and Richard was well received, which was nice. I think we're headed in the right direction. We're headed in the right direction. Richard, do you have a take on it at all?
I thought it was a good meeting to get some information, maybe counter a little bit of misinformation down in the county. Generally, the crowd was looking forward to, what, to the solutions in the area.
Thank you.
Yeah, last night, me and Larry attended the coordination council meeting, and we went over the responses for the greater sage grouse that will be incorporated into the county's responses. And we talked about the roads again, and the proposed actions for the county's alternative, and the ML three and four roads. What we'd like it to be changed to, the proposed action should start next month, and the NEPA should be completed by the end of the year. There's good and bad in that, and the good is, of course, we are moving ahead to change the road definitions, what we like, but then the other groups that want no roads, you know, it opens the door for them, and they're going to put off. But I guess the good thing is, we are moving ahead with the Florida state.
Thank you.
Yeah, after today's meeting, I'll be headed to Sacramento to attend the RCRC meeting. So I'll be doing that, and then also, Monoc County, they also passed the resolution that we saw here last week regarding the ambulance service for the north part of the county. Monoc, they passed that portion as well, so they got that done. They've also, they had a letter in the paper, and I forgot to bring it down. Therefore, supervisor for the Monoc National Forest is also resigned and moved on, and they're making requests to the regional office to get them to come up and visit with them about the issues that they have, and to get maybe some qualifications of their next forest supervisor, on what they would like to see. And that might be something that we can coordinate with Lassen County, and not then compete with the Arbor as well, and for our replacement for Mr. Burdo, his retirement. So that might be something, I'll talk with Richard about that and see if he'll get the letter supporting with them in Monoc. And that's all I have. Thank you. Supervisor Chapman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things, after the board meeting last week, I drew the short straw to attend the parabola meeting. It was a very good discussion, they covered a lot of ground. They also selected the theme for next year's, or this coming year's county fair, and I think it kind of strong is to, you know, try to bring the county together in a unified way, and it's county pride, county life is the theme. And they're emphasizing that our county's 150th anniversary by tagline, "Making History for 150 Years." So that will be the theme that they'll be submitting for the upcoming fair. The pool board is meeting this afternoon. The meeting on the agenda, Mr. Wassifar will be attending, is reviewing the draft of the site selection report that is put together. There's about eighteen or nineteen sites that were identified in the area that could potentially be the location for a new facility. Obviously, if you're going to design and build and plan, you have to have a site first, and so that would be... There were five sites that were selected, or was rated high, having been selected. Some of them may or may not be included. Interesting enough, a couple of them are county properties besides the South Street location there by the old pool being part of it, the Mesa Street property, as well as the north part of the fairgrounds were identified as potential location. So if indeed is that progressive, I can see the pool board dependent on, there were two additional sites here, a road, and the credence, school, credent school location were the top five that came through the preliminary assessment. Now, obviously, there's going to be discussion, and that could change based on the discussion they take this afternoon. But if indeed any one of the county properties winds up being a preferred site, then I think the board needs to be aware that the pool board will be coming back to talk to the county and the board about the transfer of whatever interest we have in those properties, whichever one may be, so that's a possibility to be aware of. Last Friday, I had the chance to sit in on the balance of a meeting that staff could gather dealing with the sage grouse and in our, coming to us, you know, adoption, and it was a wide group of folks that really spread, and I wanted to just take a moment and thank Amori and Galen and the staff and planning and building for pulling together that diverse group. And I'm convinced that the document will be submitted to the board for gratification and be submitted as our comments on the sage grouse, and we've reflected a wide variety of interests in Lassen County, so that's a good thing. This coming Thursday, I'll be traveling to Chico for the North Tech quarter meeting, and I'll have a report next week as to what's happening with that. And then next Monday is the PSA two meeting in Bernie, which will be looking to select a new executive director. And I'm not sure, Tom, that your schedule is, but if you're interested, we'd like to attend that now. It would be a good opportunity to kind of get acquainted or drop budge, because we would be more than happy to have you drive right along with helping run it over, so. Let me, let me sort that out, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Excuse me. I attended, as Supervisor Powell said, our coordination council meeting last night, and, you know, I left there with really mixed emotions, you know what I mean? But it's, I feel pleased, you know, at the effort that county's made to form the council, and for what its purpose it serves is basically to, to give our county a stronger position to fight any negative impacts that could otherwise be opposed on us by the federal government. And when you hear about this bird, you know, the sage grouse, and the, just the devastating effect it could have, not only to our county, but the whole western United States. And people don't realize, and hopefully that they, they will tune into it, because, you know, it has the effect that it's listed as an endangered species, and I know from my experience, you know, with off-road recreation, with the motorcycle riding, and I have friends that ride, you know, in all southern California as a kid. We rode in Mojave and then Utah. That, this bird could do to the whole recreation and OHV industry what the spotted owl did to the timber industry, and you feel, you know, a little bit helpless. My wife called, shortly after meeting, my wife called, said, "Oh, how did it go?" You know, I said, "Well," I said, "You feel like David fighting Goliath, but David, you know, with a broken wrist and two broken ankles, you know, torn ligament in the knee." You just, it's like, how do you...
You still have a rock.
You still, yeah. And, and it's just, I mean, we do what we could do, but at the end of the day, when you go for the federal government and these agencies wanting to push something, you really, the odds are really stacked against you. And it's, I mean, I don't like to be depressing, but...
Even if you, if you coordination council to object to one of their alternative things, it's years of fighting. I mean, it's not something you can rectify thirty days. I think that's frustrating.
And the problem is, even if you, if you, if you keep the bird from being listed as an endangered species, you only do so by putting strong mitigation against your lands, and what that is, is you basically take away some of the use. You say, "We're going to mitigate it, because we're going to not, we're going to not allow this, we're going to save it." So, is it...
It's actually not as much as preserving the bird as it is the habitat.
And to preserve the habitat, they obviously want, you know, to keep the people off it, and so even if you, a bit of victory, you know, if you want to call it that, you do lose some, the public loses some access, and then another ten years will come back. By the time you know it, you know, it's...
One of the ironies that I picked up on in terms of learning about the whole issue, which is one of each rat, the BLM, is the fact that the ravens, you know, are listed, or at least on the watch list, and it's the primary predator to the sage grouse. So in the process of protecting the ravens, they enhance the predator population, which is now having apparently some effect on the sage grouse, which is, you know, the issue there. So if you really want to save the sage grouse, you may want to consider, you know, it could be that, you know, it may wind up on the list, but what is decimating the sage grouse in a large part isn't the human activity in and around. You know, they'll be the ones that will be suffering as a result, but maybe consider delisting the ravens so that you can manage that population, so you take the pressure off the sage grouse. So it's kind of an interesting situation that the fish and wildlife folks have in terms of creating this situation where, as they try to protect one supposedly, they now exacerbate another species, and contradictions.
Jim, if I remember the right, the, the Nevada still gives out about two thousand permits to the on-sage grouse.
It appears there's nothing about the sage grouse, it's more about finding a way to keep us off the property. The whole western, you know, place, the land and recreation at the end of the day, that seems to me what the end goal was, but we'll see. Hopefully, common sense and public involvement will prevail, because we are slowly but surely losing...
Have we contacted our congressional representative over this?
No, they're all...
They're all working with us?
Anyway, sorry for that, but bad news. Okay, let's take up our information consent. Is there any items that move into the pool? Okay, if not, I'm looking for a motion. Okay, it's been moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, passes unanimously. Okay, we have a couple of minutes here. Why don't we quickly take... What did we decide to do on F one?
That's pool.
Cool, okay. So let's do F two. This is a, this takes in the vacancy on the Lassen County Fish and Game Commission.
What's that? I appointed Richard Ritterath, and he submitted his application, and I fully endorse him. Move to accept Richard Ritterath.
We have a second question. Okay, it's been moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, passes unanimously. We're only a minute off our ten o'clock confirmation, so...
I don't think H four we take later on.
Okay, let's take up H four. H four being the drought designation.
The actionary, the farm advisor, put together the address, kind of updates the drought. Since the item's placed on the agenda, it's no less than heard of, but I think she says the governor has declared the state emergency, the letter was initially prepared to encourage the governor to drop the commission. Hold it. Pray for it.
Yes, I worked with Data Law to draft this letter. Basically, the governor went ahead and declared the drought, but we felt it was pertinent, you know, kind of give you guys an update on current conditions in Lassen County. It's not looking good, and the long-range forecast is being looking better. When I'm done here, I'm going to have Eric Ewing, our OES officer, give a short report on it. But the main goal is to summarize the fact that we haven't had any precip, and we're following two short years. The USDA has changed their, the way they declared drought, and if we go eight weeks without any moisture, we're automatically designated as a drought, and Washoe County over Nevada went, has got the declaration, so we're, we're part of that as a contiguous county. So I guess I'll give you a little time to read the letter, and you want me to read it to him?
We'll just highlight it, and if anybody has any questions, we can...
In fact, Eagle Lake, one of the things, it's not just affecting agriculture. Eagle Lake is really low, and they can't even get a boat, and their numbers in English, they, they used to have about thirty-seven thousand English per year, and there are just over twenty thousand people now. And they don't even think they can launch a boat, you know, even the low-water ramp or whatever isn't going to work, and they're working with the Forest Service on it, but, you know, the government works not slow, and, you know, historically, things aren't looking so great, so with that, I don't think I have to tell most of the board to win the drought. And the worst thing is, is the long-range implementations. I mean, it's a slow-moving disaster, but for us livestock producers, it's, it's life-altering. You know, you can, you can only go so long and not have feed for your cows, and now that there's not even feed in the valley, and there's no cow aid to be purchased, you know, if you sell those genetics, you're never going to get them back. And there'll probably be people exiting the cattle business never to return. And we're talking multi-generational family ranches and operations really affected by this. So let's all pray for some rain, that's all I can say. Go ahead.
Well, it's my understanding that the governor of California, he declared Lassen County drought.
Correct. Declared the state of the disaster.
The entire state.
Yes.
Now, but the federal government has not, but they declared part of California is in drought, but not...
Well, last week, Nevada got, Washoe County, and a lot of counties in Nevada got the USDA declaration, because we're contiguous to Washoe County, we'll get that aid. But we never got out of it, you know, we were declared a drought back in August of 2013 as well, so we're covered for that six-months timeframe, so we're, we're well-covered. I mean, it's just the amount of money getting available from the government to be able to help us out, but, you know...
So I guess my question is, how can the USDA have declared that drought?
Because we're covered, six, less than six months ago, they did, so, you know, in February, we're due for another drought declaration from them. So that's where we're at.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I want to see the letter, it's very well-written, and I appreciate the significance of agriculture as terms of our economy, and I think there's no question about it, and you stated his point on it, but I really appreciate the next, the last paragraph being included, because in the past, most of our drought declarations have always been focused on in relation to agriculture. We seem to forget about those folks whose businesses depend upon it, such as what we see in Eagle Lake, but throughout the county, the people coming to and from, pass through our communities to get there, and when they're not coming through because the lake's not there to recreate, you know, throughout the county...
there to recreate, and, you know, throughout the county, it's suffering as a result, as well in the business areas. So, I really appreciate that paragraph. That's kind of relatively new in these waters here, pre-very...
Thank you.
Eric, do you want to, well, do you want to give a report? You told me about this morning about wildfires.
Okay. Eric, from Lassen County Emergency Service, about some of this stuff last week, and public comment, but all, interest what Craig's talking about. I ran a couple of numbers this weekend in just the last five year statistically-wise wildland fires versus what we should have for the months of December, January. Typically, we should have none, because there's just no cover and/or extremely wet and rainy. This year, we're up, in Lassen County, we're up to four, and SIFC-wide, which is basically from here north to Beaver and the Nevada border, they're up to 14, which then actually zero. Comparison-wise, the only year that's close to this is 1112, which was the year of the CHIPS fire, the Rush fire, the Reading fire. So, that's pretty fresh in our memories on what that summer brought on board. So, with Craig talking about economic impacts, it's all of the folks in our basin from last year, the CHIPS fire, and the Reading fire, the years previous to that, the weeks and weeks of smoke they had, that really hit them hard economically for tourism dollars. So, we're kind of heading down that road. I can't say we're going to have a bad fire season. It's always the worst one on the record, talk to anybody in January, it'd be the worst one ever, but everything's lining up for that, unfortunately. So, although, all the vegetation's stressed right now, it's drought-stressed from numerous years of low precipitation numbers. This year is no different. All the brush in the mountains is exposed to the air, so you're going to have a freeze fill component pounding the drought-stressed trees and brush. So, basically, the word that I'm going to carry out to most of the public is just to use caution. All these fires that we have this year alone have all been either, they're all human-caused and happen from the bed debris bird escapes. So, people that are burning need to use extreme caution. Even though it's a nice cold frosty morning, doesn't mean it's not going to get away from you coming in, because it dries up, it's extremely dry at 12:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the afternoon. And with that, the last thing, this weather pattern that we're in right now, as far as January, February, is pretty typical for us. We have a dry period this time of the year, every year, generally, a two to three-week window, but it's not two to three months worth. So, it's just kind of exciting. So, with that, anything else Craig on that you want?
Thank you.
Eric, are the fire services ramping up early this year?
Yes, I have that note here, I'm very thought over. Cow Fire received augmentation staffing from the director's declaration. In this unit, there are two-engine staff 24/7, Westwood and Beaver staff, the one near Susanville staff, 24/7 as is available for trainings, vacations, stuff like that. The Forest Service, both Modoc Forest and Lassen National Forest, got additional funding to start staffing seven days a week, so they're working through the details on how they're going to do. I've not heard anything from the police.
I just have a question. Which office generated these copies? Does it come from Ukraine?
Yes.
Okay, because there's a formatting issue we can deal with. Before you send this off, I want to bring to your attention...
Okay.
I can change that.
That needs to be changed.
I'll change it. Okay.
Thank you.
We're recommending that the board authorize the chairman to sign it.
Yeah.
Do we have a...
I take a motion.
Do you...
I'll second it. I'll second it. The movement's seconded, in all who in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay, let's take up our 10 AM confirmation. First one, uh, he too is for Dan Douglas. On his retirement. I'm moving, Chairman, the doctor, the... It's been moved in second, in all who in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Something you're going to love that lately.
Yeah. All right. Okay, Dan? All righty. Whereas Dan Douglas began his employment on November 27, 1989, as reproduction coordinator with the administration department. His position was reclassified to program assistant in 2002. In January 2003, he promoted to assistant transportation planner with the Public Works Department, Transportation Division. And in November 2005, he promoted to associate transportation planner until his retirement on January 10, 2014. And whereas Dan Douglas, as reproduction coordinator, was solely responsible for all the printing needs of the county, to include letterhead, business cards, flyers, tablets, rubber stamps, et cetera, as transportation planner, Dan was responsible for the administration and management support for the operation of the Lassen rural bus systems, including federal and state funding programs and special transportation programs. Dan has been assigned various duties and responsibilities, all of which he has performed and successfully completed with a high degree of professionalism. Dan has been an exceptional employee and friend to the county and the community. His ability, work ethic, and knowledge of the county has been invaluable. And... Whereas Dan, we've got to do some bigger font. Whereas Dan, or I need to get some little bit of strawberry glasses. Whereas Dan Douglas, Dan has been involved in numerous community organizations and has...